Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 6th, 2025, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am Commissioner Tenley Peterson, Chair. Tonight, the Commission will discuss and vote on the following items: An Adaptive Reuse Site Plan Amendment, Site Plan 269, and an informational item: Deeply Affordable Housing Presentation, given by Anne Venazia, the Division Chief of the Housing Division. Presenters and speakers joining the meeting through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other electronic devices muted until you are called upon by the clerk. Please turn off the sound to any devices around you to minimize interference, and keep your cameras off until the clerk announces your name to speak. When called upon, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the Microsoft microphone icon that is in the meeting command bar at the top of the screen. The moderator nor the clerk have the ability to unmute your mic. Once you have spoken, please mute your mics and turn your camera off. If you are dialing in by phone to join the meeting, press *6 to unmute. Public speakers will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration with an email confirmation is required to speak at tonight's hearing. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. All speakers, virtual and hybrid, will receive two minutes to comment as an individual. Only representatives from a county board-appointed advisory group, committee, and/or commission will receive three minutes to comment. A timer will be displayed on the screen if speaking virtually, and speakers in person will follow the timer stationed on the podium. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity, please reconnect by phone. However, if you are dialing in by phone and are unable to see the screen, we will provide you with an audible 30-second warning to wrap up your comments. You will be muted when your time has expired. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for further information. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Tonight's meeting will be available for review through the YouTube platform. A link has been provided on the Commission website 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Although the meeting will no longer be a live broadcast, the meeting will be available for review with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1073, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website via a link to YouTube, as stated. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Thank you. Our first item is SPLA 25-00009, Adaptive Reuse Site Plan Amendment for Site Plan 269, address at 4100 Fairfax Drive. We have Peter Schultz, our principal planner, to present this item this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, I am Peter Schultz of the Planning Division of the Department of Community Planning, Housing, and Development, and I'm here to present the staff presentation on the planning commission for the Adaptive Reuse Site Plan Amendment for 4100 Fairfax Drive. Just to situate everyone, this is actually part of a three-building site plan, an entire block in Ballston between Randolph, Stafford, Fairfax Drive, and Ninth Street North, but the particular site in question is the office building at the corner of Randolph and Fairfax Drive. The general land use plan is, for the core of Ballston, is all the same. It's actually this coordinated mixed-use development district that was adopted by the county board in the early 1980s. It provides a mixed-use, high-density redevelopment, and the zoning is the equivalent zoning district to the general land use plan designation, which is a COA, and again, it is a high-density, mixed-use zoning district. Just to give you the background, actually, was originally approved in 1988, and there was a major amendment in 1994. So what is approved is one residential building, which was constructed, that's the Richmond Square Apartments, two office buildings, only one of which has been constructed at the time. All the three sites are in separate ownership. Each building has its own self-contained parking, so there's no cross easements between them. I should mention, the third office building is the site of the International House of Pancakes, but that has been unbuilt since 1994. The current proposal we have here is an Adaptive Reuse Site Plan Amendment. It's one of the zoning ordinance amendment that was adopted last year in order to encourage reuse of outdated office buildings. The building was built, actually, in 2000, although approved in 1988. They are proposing, it is mostly vacant, proposing to convert it to 269 residential units with 269 parking spaces. The retail tenant, according to the applicant, is going to remain, and they have more parking than required, 41 parking spaces than the zoning ordinance would require. They are going to construct a rooftop amenity space. They are going to change what had been below-grade storage to tenant amenity space. The existing parking is going to change, remain unchanged, excuse me, five levels of underground parking of well over 400 parking spaces. No exterior changes, except for that rooftop addition, as well as adding operable windows that will resemble the existing office windows. And it's important to mention here, no changes to the public realm. There are no proposed changes to the sidewalks. There is no public access, there's no, I should say, public space on the property. Sidewalks and street trees will remain the same, and they will be protected during construction. So the public realm is not changing otherwise. And to give you background, this is part of the Adaptive Reuse Policy that was adopted last year by yourselves and the county board to the response to the, I will not read all this, but the declining office market, and that repurposing these vacant buildings under certain conditions is a public priority. And so it was codified in the zoning ordinance last year, a new section of the zoning ordinance. And in order to qualify for this Adaptive Reuse Site Plan Amendment, a site had to have no previous application for an adaptive reuse. This site is, that is true. The original approval must have been for at least 50% office use, that is true. More than 50% of the existing use is proposed to change, and the proposed new use, in this case residential, has to be allowed in the underlying zoning district. Again, this checks that box, and that the existing building complies with the conditions of approval, and it does, the existing as office building approval. So the proposed building meets these qualifications, and qualified Adaptive Reuse Site Plan Amendments are allowed to do additional things. They're allowed to add height and density for rooftop amenities. They're allowed to add density by converting below-grade storage areas that we usually exclude from counting as gross-floor area into tenant amenity space. Now, that won't change any of the bulk size of the building, because they are in the P1 and P2 levels. They are permitted to do this. So these meet these particular qualifications. There are others that don't apply here, but the applicant is permitted to do these things, and these meet the requirements. We do apply our adopted policies, other policies, to these sites as well. Ballston Sector Plan, for instance, there's no specific site guidance, unlike more recent sector plans. However, this area, this core of Roslin is designated, you can see there, for apartment, commercial, high-density, mixed-use, and it is. The COA zoning is a high-density zoning district that allows a mix of apartment and commercial. And in fact, at the time, the Ballston Sector Plan and the COA zoning ordinance was adopted, we actually wanted to encourage residential development, which was not, generally, was less economically feasible than office development in the early 1980s. This proposed adaptive reuse is not in conflict with the sector plan. The existing building was approved to be compliant with regard to the public realm and height and setbacks from the street in line with the sector plan. And because there is no exterior changes that are moving the building outward, it will, and no changes to the public realm, it will continue to be compliant with the current sector plan. And also, the retail plan applies here, too. In this particular case, this section of Ballston has gold and blue, which are slightly lower than the more intense red districts. Gold and blue districts allow retail and retail equivalents that provide the street life, and in this particular case, there is an existing restaurant, which the applicant has stated will remain, and it fronts on the Fairfax Drive frontage and on about half of the Randolph Street frontage. The Randolph Street frontage, two years ago, the county board approved a site point amendment to approve retail equivalent tenant amenity space on the southern half of Randolph Street, and the applicant proposes to take advantage of that for tenant amenity space along Randolph Street, which, again, is permitted by the blue designation for the retail plan. So it is compliant, no conflicts with the retail plan. Should acknowledge that there might be, the applicant has stated, after discussing with them and with discussing an interested tenant, that there may be remaining office uses. Office tenants could remain as late as 2032. And actually, the Adaptive Reuse ordinance that was adopted last year contemplated that there might be buildings where a certain amount of office still remains. It does require, however, that there should be at least 51%, 50%, 50% or more, which in our condition, we have said should be 51% or more, of the building should be converted to residential. If the applicant is, when they commence work, the tenants are going to remain, they have to convert at least 51% of the building, and that's in order for them to comply with the special Adaptive Reuse Ordinance. So, public outreach. Staff has contacted numerous times, at least three times, for the, with email, to the Ballston Virginia Square Civic Association with links to the webpage and project documents, the Ballston bid. I did have a conversation with the new leadership of the Ballston bid, although they did not indicate if they would send anything. I also reached out to the Berkeley condominiums, the Alta Vista condominiums, who we did hear back from, concerned about rooftop uses. And I also did reach out to Ditmar, who are the owner of the neighboring Richmond Square Apartments and other apartment buildings in the neighborhood of Ballston. So therefore, staff recommends that you would, that you recommend to the county board that you adopt the attached ordinance. There are proposed modifications for additional density, that is, the additional tenant amenity space that I outlined before. Compact parking ratio, this building was built at a time when 40% compact parking spaces were permitted. Compact parking space size, this building was built at a time when compact parking spaces were allowed to be as low as seven and a half feet wide. And then, one fewer loading space than would be required for a residential building of this size. There is one loading space and one trash space right now. That was adequate for an office building of this size. However, they're asking for a modification for one fewer loading space, but there still will be a loading and separate trash space, as exists on the site, therefore, subject to all the previously approved conditions of the site plan, and then the conditions attached to the staff report. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have an applicant presentation, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Lauren Riley. I'm with Walsh Kaluchin. We represent the applicant, Red Fox DC LLC, and joining me tonight is Adam Peters from Red Fox, and we're excited to bring you all the third Adaptive Reuse Amendment application this year, since since the county board's adoption. It will be converting, as Mr. Schultz noted, this existing office building into residential use, consistent with that Adaptive Reuse policy, aiming to repurpose office buildings throughout Arlington County. And just to give you a little bit of background, here's an aerial image of the site, should show up in just a moment. There appears to be a bit of a lag. I don't know, Mr. Schultz, if you're.
We've had lags before. Yeah, I think if staff shares it, sometimes it's a bit faster.
While Mr. Schultz is bringing that up, as you all saw in his presentation, the building sits at the corner of Fairfax Drive and North Randolph Street, in the heart of Ballston there. It's one block away from the metro station, and today has a 13-story office building with five levels of below-grade parking, which is plenty to service the new residential use of the building. It was constructed in 2000, and it contains about 250,000 square feet of office space today, and a little over 9,600 square feet of retail and office amenity space at the ground level. So that restaurant use along Fairfax Drive, Bronson Beer Hall, as you all might know, it will remain, and we'll be locating our lobby on the Randolph Street frontage there to keep that street activation. As Mr. Schultz noted, the majority of the building is vacant today, and by the end of 2025, it'll be 75% vacant, with that rate only anticipating to increase beyond 2025, further contributing to the strain of office vacancies on the broader office market, as well as the county's fiscal health. As noted, there may be some office tenants who wish to remain in the building, who have leases and may wish to remain in the building during the conversion. If so, the conditions of approval require the applicant to submit a phasing plan at the time of building permit, if there are office tenants still remaining in the building, showing how we'll phase that conversion over time, as well as confirming that we will indeed be converting more than 50% of the building as required by the zoning ordinance. And then, once those office uses vacate the building, the applicant will go through and continue on with the conversion, completing the residential conversion of the building. And if we go on to the next slide? And so, what does that conversion look like? The entire building is anticipated to be converted from office to residential, with the exception of the ground floor, as we just talked about. And the second through 13 floors of the building will contain 269 residential units. That'll be 17 studio units, 186 one-bedrooms, and 66 two-bedroom units. There is also approximately 12,000 square feet of additional GFA, the applicant's requesting with this application. A portion of that is through converting some unnecessary below-grade space that we no longer need, that no longer needs to serve the office, that we can use to serve the new residents through storage space, things like that. And then, of course, the additional density requested to achieve the rooftop amenity space that you can see here on the right, which will have some space for indoor/outdoor space for residents to gather in a pool. This type of rooftop amenity space is also encouraged by the new policy. As we mentioned, we have plenty of parking to service the building. We'll be providing the minimum required parking for the residential use in the remainder. The parking spaces will be used as flexible spaces, which is consistent with prior Adaptive Reuse plans that you all have reviewed. And then, the only exterior changes to the building will be to change existing windows to operable windows, and then the changes to achieve the rooftop amenity space that you can see there. Together, these changes all comply with the recommendations of the county's policy on the transformation of office buildings. And this amendment will allow the applicant to transform this obsolete office building into a vibrant residential community, while continuing to activate the North Fairfax and Randolph Street frontages with the retail and lobby uses. As Mr. Schultz noted, this is also consistent with the county's retail plan. And beyond that, this will also contribute to diverse housing stock to meet the county's goals for increased housing production in transit-oriented neighborhoods. So with that concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. It looks like everybody's on board with getting out early tonight. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any public speakers this evening?
I'm embarrassed. We do have two public speakers, I believe. This gentleman is first. Forgive me for not remembering your name, but you can come up and introduce yourself, please. Thank you. Oh, Jeff, turn the mic on, please. Hit your mic.
And you can also, there's a button, you can lift up the podium, so you don't have to lean over.
To your right. There you go.
There you go.
All right. So my name is Jeff Many, and I am with Science and Technology Associates. We are on the ninth floor of the building right now. We've been an original, we were an original tenant of the building, so since 2003, we've been in the Ballston, Roslin-Ballston corridor for over 40 years. We do have a lease right to be in the building through May of 2032. I was able to send you guys a document. I don't know if everybody got it, have other copies available. But, you know, we did feel like we needed to let you guys know we exist, because it wasn't in the application. And one of the key features of that is the application, as it is right now, it may show what the vision would be, really, probably, whatever it is, eight years out, 10 years out, because obviously, construction in our space wouldn't start while we're there, but then also, you know, basically, about 16 units, we calculate, fall within our space, our footprint. There's about 179 of the 269 units, we believe, fall within our stack. So that impacts things like sewage lines that would be running through, water lines, electric. So all of that, really, you know, the way the application is right now, it doesn't address what that actually looks like for the next eight years, in terms of when the construction happens, where it happens, how is that figured out? So that's one key element that we wanted to kind of make sure that we address, and that, you know, hopefully gets addressed. The other thing is, by not mentioning us in the initial application, it doesn't talk about the safety plan. We're going to have people in this building, which is going through, really, in a lot of ways, a more complicated construction than a new building would go through, when you're retrofitting all of this. You know, there's, in the, in the document that I saw today in the agenda, it talks about sidewalk safety. There's people inside the building that are going to be there, and there's going to be both physical hazards that are introduced big time, and then also things you can't see, air quality, what kind of toxins are being brought into the environment, things like that. And then, lastly, there's also, you know, as a tenant there, we negotiated, as a commercial tenant, to have a commercial space, and so there's, you know, the right to peaceful enjoyment, and then also warranty of suitability. We do a lot of DOD work, so, you know, we have some pretty high-level meetings, we have special spaces. Those things, the suitability element would certainly be impacted, you know, put in there in the, in the initial, in the document I sent you guys. We could have a situation where you have a group of military personnel in full dress going up an elevator with people going to a pool party, which nobody's doing anything wrong, but it would be an odd situation for everybody involved. Also, again, you could have, you know, there's security implications from having residents that we don't know. Are they foreign nationals? What is the situation there? And that can have also some, some pretty significant implications. So just wanted to bring those to your guys' attention. Really appreciate everybody here that's talked with us throughout. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much. And we did get your letter, and I think it'll inform some of the questions we asked tonight.
Thank you very much.
Is Alexander Ruff in the office, in the room here? Mr. Ruff? No? Okay. That's it for our public speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. We do not have a committee chair report for this project, since it's part of our Adaptive Reuse Policy, so we will open this up for discussion. I just want to acknowledge that Commissioner Bagley is joining us virtually this evening. So Commissioner Bagley, you know, let us know. Turn your video on if you want to ask any questions or raise your hand. So I will go through our typical agenda items. If you have comments or clarifying questions about any of them, let me know, and then we will go back to them once we actually start our discussion. So right now, we're just kind of identifying the agenda items we want to talk about. So the first one, site location, land use, and site design. Nope. Building form and architecture, I actually do have a question about that, so we'll do that. Transportation. Yep. Sustainability and biophilia. Yes. Public spaces. I don't think we really have any, so missed that one. Community benefits. Okay, there we go. And process phasing or construction. We can ask, yeah, we'll ask about that. Okay, so we will start with building form and architecture. Questions about that? Commissioner Striner?
Before, can we lump in the existing tenants into one of these?
Yeah, I think process phasing, construction.
Okay.
Could address that, as well as building form and architecture.
Sounds good.
But if you feel like one of your questions isn't addressed by one of those topics, I can add another one. Okay, perfect. Okay, so we'll start with building form and architecture. Commissioner Givara?
For the applicant, for the tenant for STA, is there a space?
For the applicant, for the tenant for STA, is there a space, a cleared facility? Yes. Okay, because there's additional, as we may very well know, security implications for that. And, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Striner?
Yeah, I'll go on that. So I guess this is more for staff. Is there, I mean, I, what is our jurisdiction here in terms of what we can do to sort of help manage this kind of lease situation?
Apart from situations like this being anticipated by the ordinance, we leave it up to the applicants to address that with their existing tenants, kind of like we do with any other, any other project. Now, if they're going to need to do some major changes to the interior to accomplish this, you know, of course, we would have to eventually see it. But apart from accommodating for the parking and this condition of phasing, otherwise, it's a private matter for the most part.
Yeah, that's how I would read it. I would just encourage the applicant to be flexible with their existing tenants to meet their needs because they've signed on in agreement in good faith through 2032 and it's good to respect that. But I'm not going to go any further because I don't think I have any jurisdiction to do so.
Commissioner Lantelme.
Yeah, following up on Commissioner Striner, staff. Wouldn't the county also have the ability to do inspections as construction goes on to make sure there's compliance with the building permits and that sort of thing?
Right, yes, of course, yeah, as construction, however they choose to do their construction, whatever permits that they need to pull would be inspected, yes.
And the tenant would have the ability to see those too, because those are public documents.
Oh, yeah, 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 they're all, they have to be publicly posted and yeah, they're all on our website, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I would hope that no one has to go to litigation because things aren't working the way they want. And I presumably would all be able to work these things out. But the tenant does have many. In addition to the lease, there's also a common law, there's various remedies that you could pursue if it came down to that, which I fervently hope does not happen because we both would like this building to be a success as a residence and convert well, but also to keep an employer here. So, you know, it's the county's interest on both sides to have this work out really well. So, thank you.
And to keep everyone in the building safe for the entire duration of a possible project. I saw Commissioner Amadeo, and then we'll go to Commissioner Striner.
I'm assuming that the, you're going to have to present a staging plan for the construction, but I'm just wondering, as you get more, to get to that 51%, what is each facade going to look like? Is it gonna, are you going to go facade by facade? Because I know you're replacing the windows. So are you going to have kind of like a checkerboard look, like some of, like is it floor by floor?
Yeah, I can speak to this and a little bit to the questions about phasing and timing and all of that as well. So the conditions do require us, if we have office tenants in the building at the time that we're filing our building permits, we also have to file a phasing plan. And that plan will show the delineation of the office uses from the residential use and kind of how that separation will work. And of course, security is going to be a top priority as well. The applicant will work to ensure that both the residential and the office space remain secure. And I've also been assured by our architects, even though we're at this kind of earlier stage of zoning entitlement, they are doing some initial work on the permitting and they've confirmed that they can route utilities around existing office spaces, so there won't be any penetration to those or, you know, impacts to those existing tenants. They'll remain, you know, they'll continue to have access and we'll continue to work with those tenants to ensure those lease obligations are met, of course, even though that is a private-party matter. And then in terms of the phasing, how that might look on the exterior, you know, no, part of the first phase will certainly include the rooftop amenity space, so all that will be done at once. And then the only other exterior work is the operable windows. So all operable windows will be replaced where we have units. So where a tenant occupies a portion or all of a floor, we will not be changing out the operable windows where those tenants have those spaces. But we will be doing that as we start to go up the building and converting the office space to residential use.
I guess my question was, if you get to 51%, and so the people on the ninth floor don't move out, will you have, some windows will be, it's just a general question, I'm kind of curious.
So to clarify, the maximum amount of office tenants remaining would be 13% of the building. So we're well, the vast majority of the building is going to be renovated in the first phase. And I think it's all, it's potentially the ninth floor and a portion of the seventh floor that would not have the operable windows. But these operable windows are going to be made to match, to look like the existing. So there won't be much of a perceived difference from the pedestrian's point of view.
Commissioner Steinberger was next, and then Commissioner Guevara.
So I think this question works here, but if Commissioner Peterson wants me to ask it later, that's fine, too. I understand, you know, that the tenants we're hearing from are certainly, you know, interested in maintaining their lease and staying in the building, you know, through phasing in all likelihood. Are, you know, does the developer have other buildings, other space that could potentially be worked out with the tenant that might be more suitable to this? If the tenant were amenable to that, that would have other, you know, DOD clearance space, that sort of thing? Just an understanding of sort of what? And I see you raising your hand, but the, you're not, I have to, thank you, the applicant has to answer. You know, what that might look like or other sort of coordinated efforts that might be appropriate, you know, should this, you know? Not that it would, I share Commissioner Lantelme's view that I hope this can be done successfully in a, you know, prioritizing safety manner. But if it is an undesirable existence to go through while the transition is happening, which I can understand, what an alternative arrangement might look like.
And I'll hand it to Mr. Peters with the applicant. I know the owners have been in discussions with the existing tenants and I don't know what you want to add about that.
My name is Adam Peters, the president of Red Fox. Property management and ownership has been in contact with all of the residents in the building, explained the process that we're going through and offered them a variety of options. One, obviously, to stay. Two, a negotiation to buy out the leases that are currently in place. And so there've been conversations of financially contributing money such that they don't have to stay in the building, they can take that and go elsewhere. Also, our property manager has been working with them and helping them locate other spaces. They, of course, can do that on their own, but we don't have other space that we can move them into. But we've had conversations with all the tenants and been upfront about the process.
Commissioner Guevara.
Have some tenants accepted that offer yet, or is this still ongoing?
Yes, some tenants have accepted it. Two tenants have not, but.
Understood, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Commissioner Guevara.
It's actually been addressed by some of my commissioners and their responses, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bagley, I see you have your video on. Did you have a question? Or you're just welcome to have your video on the whole time so we can see your lovely face.
Thank you very much, but Madam Clerk advised me I must have my camera on it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that is a rule of ours, so thank you. I actually had a question about the structural integrity of the roof and just confirming that it can handle a pool. A lot of times when we're talking with applicants about putting biophilia or trees on top of a roof, they say, oh, you know, the building has to be designed a certain way to take that sort of weight and it's really hard to build a building like that, so we can't do that for you. And so putting a pool on a building top that wasn't designed to have a pool on the building top strikes me as, you know, possibly a similar sort of situation. So I just wanted to confirm that, that somebody is looking at.
Well, obviously, there would need to be a building permit and the building permit would need to demonstrate that it could take the weight. On the plans, the more detailed plans, which I didn't share with you, I think the applicant probably explained more, they're going to do some building up of the roof, I think, to accommodate the pool, too. But of course, our permit people should catch that.
Okay, perfect. I was also wondering, a lot of times we see apartment projects in Arlington, fantastic, we love having more residential. We get a lot of questions asked, why not condos? So why not condos for this particular property?
Condo development is, has its own challenges. It's different than for rent. Really, the number of units, it'd be 269 units, to sell 269 units is, it's a heavy lift. Usually, you know, new condo buildings, and I've built a number of them in Washington DC, they tend to be a bit smaller. And on top of that, there's financing issues of, of actually getting a loan to build that many condo units. And then, again, selling that many is the biggest challenge overall.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item, is just about, one of the benefits of the adaptive reuse program is that theoretically we'll get larger-size units. And I noticed that most of the ones you're proposing are one and two, one and two bedrooms and studios. So why not more bedrooms? Three bedrooms, for example.
It's a good question, you know, so it really comes down to sort of the column grid. You know, we, we're not designing a brand-new building, we do have a column grid that we have to respond to. So some of that sort of ties our hands and some things we can do. But within the one-bedrooms, a lot of them are larger than what is currently being built in a lot of new buildings. If you'll see, there's things that are 500 and 600 square feet in a lot of these new buildings. Ours tend to actually be larger because the conversion and sort of the width of, of the floor plate. So while they're a majority of one-bedrooms, they are going to be larger than the typical ones that are built these days.
And I'll just add, what's unlike, what, from, from other adaptive reuse buildings, normally you see squatty, square office buildings where you can kind of divvy that space up into larger chunks. This is a more narrow, straight office building. And as Mr. Peters is saying, we're responding to that column grid, so we necessarily have to break up the units in a certain manner. But the two-bedroom units that we have do represent 25% of the total units provided.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to transportation. No, we are on the second item, just transportation.
Okay, sorry.
That's right. Transportation, Commissioner Striner.
Okay, I have two quick ones. Number one, for staff, do you all anticipate any kind of problem arising from there being only one loading dock at this site?
This site actually is fortunate in that its loading dock does not go directly onto a public sidewalk. And in fact, there is almost an alley, an alley-like situation in the rear. It's private, but if, in case, there, hope, they should schedule it well so that it does not disrupt a public realm. But there is, would be pull-off space in that driveway area in order to accommodate if there is more than one at a time.
Okay, perfect, okay, so that's on them. And then, so my second question, so it's, it's 269 parking spaces for 269 units, correct?
Correct.
That's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like a little bit of a higher parking ratio than what we normally do in these parts of town. Have you all thought about opening up to a sort of, opening up some of the parking towards commercial uses? We've had some success in other parts of the county with that. And it's, it's a nice way to generate revenue and get more use out of those spots, maybe, than you might have in an area where we're right on the corridor and most of the residents might not even have, maybe, you know, most, but some of the residents might not even have a car in the first place.
And you're right, we have plenty of parking here. We have over 441 parking spaces and five levels of below-grade garage. We're providing the minimum requirement per the zoning ordinance for the residential uses and then 41 spaces for the retail. There's a remaining 131 spaces in their garage that will be flexible use that the applicant can allocate to residents, retailers, as you mentioned. You know, selling that, those parking spaces for others who may want to drive and park in the neighborhood or eventually converting it to residential amenity use. Those are all possibilities that, that are, that are on the table there. And so we think we've got plenty of room to work with.
Got it, okay, so you're just hitting the middle, got it.
And I just want to confirm with staff, the site plan conditions do allow them to rent the excess parking spaces to the neighborhood or to anyone, for that matter. I know some site plans don't let you do that. Okay, well, we'll circle back to get a response on that. Commissioner Burkey.
Hopefully, a very quick clarification question. With the compact parking spaces, so it's, so 16% of the total spaces are compact, is that right?
Commissioner Burkey, I think it's a little bit more, today it's about 40%.
Forty percent. For the official ratio for one space per unit, they're, they're going to have a ratio of 16 for, for the residential use.
Okay, that was it?
And it also just looks like, no, we do not limit their use of the parking. I know, I think, yeah, I think we do that in areas that are strictly residential, RA kind of districts, but I do not see anything in the conditions that would prevent them from renting out extra.
Perfect. Other questions about transportation? I'm just interested in EV parking. Are you providing any, are you interested in providing any in the future?
Yeah, we typically provide about 10% of the total residential spaces for, for EV chargers. They'll be installed and we'll probably have another 5% or so that are wired for future additional chargers. So that's something we do in all of our buildings.
Well, and we haven't priced that out and planned it out yet, which is why it's not in the plans before, before you all. It's something we'll work on during the building permitting process.
Okay, and since this is an adaptive reuse, we can't require it as part of the site plan conditions, but it's something that you intend to do because the market demands it, correct? Then, is that correct, staff? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to sustainability and biophilia. Questions or comments about that? Commissioner Robertson?
I just wanted to build on Chair Tinley's question. Can you talk, well, I'm delighted to hear about the, the, your thoughts about EV parking and charging. Can you talk more generally about sustainability elements that you're thinking about including as you do this adaptive reuse?
Thank you. I think, as you know, the, the biggest sustainability benefit to these projects is, is keeping the existing building in that existing below-grade parking garage. So keeping that embodied carbon in the building is, is a great benefit. In terms of other sustainability measures, similar to the other adaptive reuse projects, we've not committed to, to any sustainable elements, though I imagine, Mr. Peters, as we start to design the building, it'll include efficient appliances, low-flow fixtures, things like that.
Yeah, absolutely. It'll be Energy Star appliances, it's all-electric throughout the building. We're going to be reusing the existing mechanical system, so it's a water source system. And so that's actually the most efficient way to do it, is to have one central system for the whole building. And of course, in the materials that'll be in the building, these days are always sourced from, you know, high-quality manufacturers. And so, you know, we think, you know, in general, as, as Lauren said, just doing adaptive reuse is the greenest thing we can do. But all these other elements packed on top of that, it's just sort of standard business practice these days for everything we do. There's no benefit to not do it. So we, of course, are doing all the green things that we can do.
That's good to hear, thank you.
Just a follow-on question, you mentioned you're doing all-electric and that's possibly because the building isn't wired for gas or, yeah, piped for gas, I guess.
The building's piped for gas.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's used for the retail tenant. The only place that we will have gas is on the rooftop for, for our grill or two. But the rest of, you know, the vast majority of the utilities are all-electric.
Okay, that's great to hear. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll go to, yes, Commissioner Torres.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I wanted to ask if you could elaborate a little bit more on vegetation and how that's going to change in the rooftop and the entryway and surrounding areas now that the space is going to be residential as opposed to office?
Yes, the rooftop will have several planters and planter boxes over there to make that a little more lively area, introduce some plant life there. And then, surrounding the property on both street frontages, there are street trees currently there. So there's already that streetscape, that vibrant pedestrian network there that we can continue to utilize.
Okay, then moving on to community benefits. Commissioner Patel.
Oh, oh. Okay, I thought there were two hands over there.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Patel. Thank you. So, Mr. Schultz, I think this question is for you. It's more of a edification, I guess. For me, Commissioner Burkey and I were having a little heated conversation over here. Spirited, spirited, indeed. So this is my question. You know, I think that there is universal excitement over this particular opportunity to do adaptive reuse and what the policy can provide to the community. But when reading, you know, what the core principles of the adaptive reuse policy is, we're talking about repurposing obsolete buildings. And I think that I, my, my quarry kind of falls into this space around that, that kind of definition, really. Because this is, you said, a building that was built in the 2000s, right? So it's not what I would typically think about in terms of the word obsolete.
So it's not what I would typically think about in terms of the word obsolete, except there's this portion in the explanation that talks about chronic vacancies. And that, I think, could then be a catchall for a lot of buildings in which we're seeing that issue, where there's not, you know, good appetite for tenants in our, in our commercial spaces. Which is fine, right? We are, we have this equally important policy or initiative where we're thinking about amplifying housing and housing opportunities. And so Chair Peterson actually raised one of the questions that I had, which was around the other responsibility, I guess, for when we are doing these conversion. And that is conversions and that is delivering residential units that are larger. And I appreciate your response about the limitations that exist within the building structure. I, I think that one of the concerns for me continues to be that we don't include in one of our trade offs the affordable housing component, that there isn't something in there that requires maybe not an AHIF contribution, because maybe that's not what we're looking for, but still some form of requirement that the, that the housing must be affordable here. And where our spirited conversation was, is that Commissioner Burkey was saying it doesn't pencil out. And I don't understand that component of it, is how it doesn't pencil out. And to the extent that it doesn't, if the math doesn't math in that space when we're doing adaptive reuse, isn't there, is there some form of tracking that's happening? That is really looking at these, these, you know, buildings that we're repurposing and really finding out whether the residential units that are created there are larger and price below that of new construction. So if we can't require affordable housing under this current policy, the way that it's framed, and it appears that we can't, and we're not necessarily pushing it, are we at least capturing data to determine whether this ordinance is in effect creating the larger, more affordable units that truly do diversify the housing options that are coming online? And I'll tell you, one of my concerns is, I, you know, along Fairfax Drive, there are a number of commercial buildings that are probably facing the same concerns as this one. And if we are not diversifying the housing opportunities for people at different income levels along Fairfax Drive, because we're not requiring affordable housing, are we not then actually missing a really big opportunity to be able to make housing truly affordable in Arlington?
Commissioner Patel, Matt Pfeiffer for the record, Planning Division, I'll take this one. So I will say, just to start out, you know, the applicant's proposal tonight, we've judged to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance standards. As far as the overall policy question, I know we have Mark McCauley, I believe, online. And he can speak to that or correct any misstatements by me. But, you know, I think that the major thrust of that policy was to stop sort of the bleeding in the cap rates, right, for obsolete office or, you know, ailing office buildings. And beyond that, really shrink the overall supply of office to try to help the health of our office market. And it's all of its knock on effects. So I don't think that, while a laudable goal, I don't think that necessarily increasing the residential, you know, size or affordability metrics associated with these conversions was necessarily the point of the adaptive reuse. In terms of tracking, I'm not aware that we are actively tracking that, but I will certainly bring that back and see if that's something that we might want to do.
I would appreciate that because, you know, on page 13 of the staff report, it specifically identifies three bullet points, including the size and the price point. So, I mean, if we are advertising this in this way and saying that this is going to be a benefit that is, you know, received by the community, then we should be tracking it to make sure that it's actually realized. And I think, you know, it really goes to the larger picture that this community is wanting to know that when we are getting community benefits from any one of our projects, are we actually truly realizing those benefits? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. I too would be interested in seeing some tracking to see what the average price per unit is or price per square foot of these units when we're looking at conversions, just to see if we are getting some new price points in housing. But I also think there's the added benefit of these projects will bring in increased revenues, which then the county has their discretion to use for affordable housing grants and whatnot. So that'll be kind of an indirect benefit that we may see.
Well, you know, and I just want to add on to this, because this is where our spirited conversation is, is that I actually don't believe in terms of a policy perspective that we are, that we're limited in terms of saying, well, we'll get this. I actually think that we could be asking for a lot more and that maybe we're missing opportunities because we think we're just taking the minimum that we can.
Can I speak for myself? I think it's an ongoing conversation we should have. My view is that this proposal clearly fits within the zoning ordinance. It clearly fits within the parameters of this policy. I believe very strongly that we would not be seeing this third proposal without the policy. It's no coincidence that this policy was passed and suddenly we have several very exciting opportunities. So there are trade offs and my understanding all along has been, we have a lot of office vacancies that are unproductive to this community. We're providing a streamlined process in return for getting these, these buildings to be more productive and we're adding to our housing supply, which by the way, you know, it's difficult, but new housing will have long-term impacts on obviously supply, but also cost in the long run. So even tracking the cost of those new units, that does not account for the long-term impacts on the housing market. You know, Arlington has been very good at adding housing. This is another way for us to continue doing so. And so I think it's, if we have a disagreement, the disagreement about is the ability to, to prescribe good things through regulation. And maybe I'm a little bit more skeptical of our ability to do that here. I certainly think by removing regulatory burdens, we're seeing the ability for the market to do more of maybe what we'd like to see, which in this case is provide housing, which is going to be a more productive use than what we have right now, which is a lot of semi vacant office buildings that don't produce tax revenue and certainly don't otherwise provide benefits for our community. Don't want to get into a whole, but anyway, I'll say my piece. We're really talking about this proposal here, but I just, I wanted to express my views. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Steinberger.
So I think I want to focus, I think there's an interesting philosophical policy debate to be had. I don't think that, you know, the application in front of us is the way to have that sort of, for me, is not the way to have that sort of broader policy discussion. But I think it, I am interested in the ability to track some of the information. And I understand this is the third adaptive reuse project that we've had this year and with the new policy. Is that right? Okay, so in terms of, you know, actually seeing the benefits and the timing of sort of when we'd be able to track some of that information, I think we're conservatively five years out from having that level of information, probably a smidge more in terms of sort of a meaningful kind of data analysis of that. So I'd be interested in sort of, yes, I want that data, but I'd also be interested in creative approaches that we might be able to, you know, as a county, that staff could sort of suggest for how we may be able to track some of that information in the shorter term, whether it's projective or something else. Because I think that waiting for that long to get some of this data as we're making some of these, trying to make informed decisions now, isn't necessarily, I'd like to see us get benefits another way as well. So that's just sort of where my head goes to that. But, I mean, I'm supportive of this project. I think this project should move forward. I intend to support this project. And I think that the broader policy conversation that is happening in the background should not interfere with the ability for this project to move forward, but we should be aware of the other policy implications that are, that form the context for, you know, the conversation about this specific project. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about community benefits? Commissioner Guevara?
Yeah, so I want to associate myself with Commissioners Patel's comments. While I will also be supportive of this project, and I think it's a good starting point. It shouldn't be the last starting point, particularly as Commissioner Schreiber said here that, you know, we're looking at five years out potentially if we're just going to consider the data to make decisions. And so I would really encourage staff to get, you know, with the board or whomever the powers that we are, to actually consider other ways to do this. And also the philosophy that we're adapting, you know, if we're going to go with saying that filtering is what creates more affordability and that adding just supply to the market is actually what creates affordable housing. Obviously, there's been studies that sort of negate that or provide a more nuanced approach to that. So I would really want to see a broader conversation and considerations of how to really raise affordability in Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to process phasing and construction, and then we will go to a vote. Any questions or comments about process phasing or construction? Okay, then we will go to a vote. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the County Board adopt the attached ordinance for SPLA 25-00009, SP number 269, to permit the conversion of an existing office building with ground floor retail to residential use and ground floor retail with modifications for additional density, compact parking ratio, compact parking space size, loading space and other modifications necessary to achieve the proposed adaptive reuse project located at 4100 Fairfax Drive, subject to all previously approved conditions of SP number 269 and the conditions of the attached Adaptive Reuse Site Plan Amendment Ordinance.
Second.
Okay, introduced by Commissioner Patel, seconded by Commissioner Steinberger. Do we have any discussion about the motion? Okay, then we will move to a vote. Commissioner Lan Telmy.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley, online.
Online.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Guevara.
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Striner.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Amadeo.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And I will also say aye, so that passes unanimously. Do we have any additional motions? No. Okay, well, first I want to thank our staff, our applicant and our public speakers for coming here tonight. What all of you are doing is really important to the success of this project. I am very hopeful that the applicant continues to work with their tenants to make sure that this transition is smooth and that your business can continue to be successful for all of our benefits. I also wanted to say, we are less than a year since, or it's about a year since the Planning Commission approved this new ordinance. And so far, we have seen three projects, which is really exciting because we are introducing new housing, we're making commercial office space more productive, we are making neighborhoods more vibrant when, you know, sidewalks used to be pretty empty because buildings were empty. We're now seeing, we're going to see more residents who can patronize the local businesses, the restaurants, the shops. So that's really exciting. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who is here tonight for their work on this and for making this zoning amendment a success.
Madam Chair, one comment?
Oh, yes.
One thing I will note is that we have had a number of older buildings come before us that were being torn down. And we always raised, well, why couldn't you convert it? What you're showing and what those other two projects showed is that you can convert these old office buildings, that they work quite nicely. And when somebody now comes in and says, oh, we can't do it, it's really going to be, you're choosing not to do it. And while we can't stop them from tearing it down, I think I will not particularly believe any developer coming and saying, oh, this can't be converted. And I'm particularly thinking of further down Fairfax Drive, where we had the tower being torn down for the Dallas Donut across from the Holiday Inn. And they said, oh, we couldn't do it. We can't do it. Well, that was a building that really could have. You know, they chose not to. And that, again, that's fine. They're getting more units out of it. So I have no disagreement, but it can be done. You're proving it can be done. And I'm really happy that we have an ordinance now that is encouraging this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item, which is going to be an informational item on affordable housing. Many of you probably know that October is Affordable Housing Month and this year is the 10-year anniversary of the passage of Arlington County's Affordable Housing Master Plan. And so we will have an informational item on deeply affordable housing, which is an issue that has been very important to this commission since we often see affordable housing provided at 60% AMI. And we know that it is very important that it be available at 30% AMI. So I will turn to Madam Clerk to introduce our next item.
Well, you did such an excellent job, Madam Chair. But coming behind you, I will say this is a deeply affordable housing presentation. For those online, this is an informational item only. There are no public speakers on this item. We have the Housing Division Director, Anne Venesia, to present this item to us this evening. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Anne Venesia, the Housing Director for Arlington. And thank you for having me tonight. Thank you for allowing me to present virtually. It's nice to see some familiar faces as well. And as Madam Clerk shared, I will be sharing tonight how the county's housing work is structured, as well as an overview of the planning and policy framework that guides our affordable housing efforts. And then I'll do a deeper dive into how Arlington supports stable housing for our neighbors with the greatest affordability needs. So starting with how our housing work is structured. So the county's housing work is shared between two departments, the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development, and specifically in the Housing Division, which is the division and department I'm representing tonight, as well as the Department of Human Services, or DHS. So starting with CPHD Housing, the Housing Division supports the development and preservation of affordable housing through direct financing and land use policy and is organized into four teams, Housing Development, Planning and Community Development, Finance and Asset Management, and Housing Arlington. Meanwhile, the Department of Human Services operates the county's housing subsidy programs, homelessness and eviction prevention, and the permanent supportive housing program. And given the interest of this group, most of my focus tonight will be on the programs and initiatives run by CPHD Housing. But DHS also does significant work to support our deeply affordable units. So it is important to have their programs in mind as well. So I'm going to shift now to discuss the policy framework that guides the county's affordable housing efforts with a special focus on how we address the needs of our extremely low-income neighbors. So as many of you know, in 2015, the County Board adopted its first Affordable Housing Master Plan. And the goal was to define a community vision for meeting housing needs through 2040. And a review of this plan was completed in 2022. And staff uses the Affordable Housing Master Plan to guide all of its work. And there are three goals. The first is creating and preserving a supply of housing that meets the needs of its residents. The second is ensuring access to stable housing and services. And lastly, supporting the long-term financial and environmental sustainability of Arlington's housing. You can read the plan and associated reports on our website. And we also have a dashboard, which is a treasure trove of data. So if you like data, there's a whole lot of data to dig into. And I can post some of these links into the chat or share them with planning staff after the presentation. And I also want to make a quick plug. We're celebrating our 10-year anniversary of the plan during Affordable Housing Month, which is happening now. And again, we have a whole bunch of events that are posted on our website if you're interested in participating and learning more. So I'd like to spend a few minutes just talking through how we address the three Affordable Housing Master Plan goals, just because it provides a nice framework for that deeper dive into that deeper affordability discussion. And so starting with supply, the county works to make sure that there's both sufficient affordable rental supply as well as ownership housing. And affordable housing typically cannot work through market forces alone and often requires public dollars to make the projects financially feasible. So although Arlington County doesn't own and operate housing, we're very proactive in developing and preserving affordable housing and use three mechanisms. The first is the county's loan fund, which includes the Affordable Housing Investment Fund, or AHIF. And we use this to make loans to developers to create and preserve committed affordable units or CAFs. Rents are restricted to be affordable at different income levels and only households who make a certain income or below are eligible to live in those units. And then additionally, as many of you are familiar with, when developers build projects that exceed what's enabled by right, they're required to contribute to affordable housing, either by committing affordable units at or nearby the property or through financial contributions to the AHIF. And then lastly, there's also, there are also rental homes that are naturally lower priced. And this is because of location, amenities, age and other characteristics. And these market rate affordable units, or MARCS, are also considered part of Arlington's affordable housing stock. So on the ownership side, we also have a down payment and closing cost assistance program, which we call MYPAP. And we also have affordable dwelling units, which are ownership units with restricted resale prices to help keep them affordable. And then we did- And then we did release our homeownership study in 2024, which suggests additional future tools for affordable ownership housing. So while it's critical to have enough housing supply, making sure that the people who need the housing can actually access and remain in their housing is just as important. And so that really is the spirit of our access goal. So Arlington supports housing subsidy programs that are funded with local, state, and federal dollars, and those are really critical to this access piece. So in these situations, household incomes are unable to fully pay for rent. So Arlington pays a portion of the rent on behalf of the family. It's another approach to stably housing families in Arlington, particularly our extremely low-income households. And we currently serve over 3,500 families annually with our subsidy programs. The county also uses the continuum of care model to make sure that a strong safety net is in place for people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And this includes information, referrals, and emergency assistance to help keep people in their homes. And then lastly, as part of our access goal, we also have fair housing outreach, education, and enforcement responsibilities, and updated our fair housing plan in 2023. So the third and final Affordable Housing Master Plan goal, sustainability, means a lot of things. The first is we want to make sure that we're building an environmentally sustainable community so that affordable housing is built using green construction and materials and when possible, close to transit networks. So for instance, this photo of HC's Apex Project uses solar panels to support energy use at the property. We also need to be good stewards of the housing that the county has invested in. So we have staff make sure that it's safe, up to code, and financially stable. And then finally, we make sure that our housing resources are strong. So we work with developers to ensure that loan funds are paid back when possible so that we can support additional affordable housing projects. So to help inform our implementation framework under the Affordable Housing Master Plan, the county periodically completes a housing needs analysis, generally about every five years, to monitor any changes that might impact our housing policies. And earlier this year, we worked with the GMU Center for Regional Analysis to produce an updated housing needs analysis. So most of the data is from the U.S. Census Bureau's American Community Survey, and it uses the most recent 2018 to 2023 five-year estimates. So the analysis helps to inform housing policies and priorities by highlighting changes in population and housing market, quantifying potential shortfalls in housing affordability at various income ranges based on the census data, and quantifying future housing needs by income ranges based on county population and job forecasts. And we just published the latest report to our website. So again, another link that I can share with this group after the presentation. And similar to the last report, the latest housing needs analysis shows the greatest need for our lowest-income households. So how does the county support these households? And I've touched on this a little bit, but now we're going to do that deeper dive that I mentioned. So historically, the county has used subsidy programs, such as housing grants, as its primary tool to support extremely low-income households. So primarily, this is because creating units affordable at the 30% AMI level can be really challenging to finance and harder to support during property operations. And I'll discuss that part more in just a moment. So CPHD and DHS work together to support extremely low-income households by creating programs that complement each other. So for instance, committed affordable units, or CAFs, that are secured by CPHD Housing, help provide a supply of units for DHS's housing grants, housing choice voucher, and permanent supportive housing clients, who tend to earn less than 30% of the area median income. And just for context, so the median income in Arlington this year is approximately $164,000 for a family of four. And meanwhile, an extremely low-income household, which is defined as a family earning 30% or less of the area median income, earns approximately $49,000 for a family of four. So there's a really big delta there. So in addition, DHS subsidies and case management, as well as eviction prevention, utility, and security deposit resources, further fill that affordability gap for CAF households and help improve housing stability. And it's really important to emphasize how this collaboration between CPHD and DHS is part of the county's overarching strategy for affordable housing, particularly deeply affordable housing in Arlington. So given the ability for 30% AMI CAFs to provide affordability in the long term, some of you may be wondering why we don't put more resources into creating this inventory. So as I mentioned a moment ago, 30% AMI units can be challenging to finance in our committed affordable projects because they reduce annual project revenue. And this can have several impacts. So specifically, starting with what we call net operating income, which is the amount of revenue available after all the operating expenses are paid, but before debt service and taxes are paid. So this net operating income decreases because the revenue is lower on these units. And that can directly impact a developer's ability to finance the project because it reduces how much the developer can borrow or the debt capacity. And so it also can jeopardize equity investor interest and pricing if the project is deemed too risky because of the suppressed revenue. So these constraints can impact how many deeply affordable units a project can support and still get the other parts of its financial stack. And then in addition, units affordable at 30% of AMI may struggle to cover their operating expenses. They barely pay for themselves in a way when they're in operation. So for example, our current average annual operating cost is about $10,900 per unit annually. And meanwhile, a 30% AMI rent for one bedroom unit really produces just slightly over $11,000 in revenue annually. So basically, that leaves a balance of less than $200 for each of those units, which is insufficient to cover debt service and taxes. So again, it really just barely covers the operating and really doesn't leave much left. And so the other thing is in the out years, if these operating expenses escalate faster, then 30% AMI rents grow, which is pretty common, especially if larger property repairs are needed. Future operating expenses can actually exceed revenue on a 30% AMI unit altogether, which has implications for paying off existing debt and future debt refinancing. So switching to the county side of the equation quickly. So the funding gap, and therefore county loan request typically is higher on 30% units. So for example, if you deepen the affordability from a 60% AMI unit down to a 30% AMI unit, it often can increase that financing gap for the county by $180,000 or more per unit. And so it just increases the amount of county loan funds that are needed for that project and limits how many units the county can support annually. And then relatedly, 30% of AMI units, as we've been discussing, generate less cash flow. And that basically reduces the amount of funds available to make annual payments on the county loan, which really puts strain on that third goal of the Affordable Housing Master Plan that I mentioned, which is the sustainability goal of being able to replenish those loan funds. But I really want to emphasize that even if the county resources were endless and we could fund all the units at the 30% of AMI level, the other investor and lender constraints really drive our ability to increase deeply affordable units in our projects. And then in terms of increase in affordability on existing projects, because that question has come up as well, that can be even more challenging since those changes impact a property's net operating income and require approvals by investors and other lenders. Because the projects basically have already been underwritten, assuming certain revenue levels. And so if we try to suppress that after the project's already in operations, investors and lenders typically don't agree to those changes. But do not despair. There is hope here. So providing deeper affordability through CAFs still provide a longer-term strategy to support these extremely low-income households and can reduce the need to provide ongoing rent subsidies. So we are still very interested in doing this, and we try to maximize these units when and where we can. And we use several strategies to do this. So the first is certain funding, such as Federal Home Loan Bank funding and Virginia Housing Trust Fund funding, help properties deepen affordability because they provide financing with either no payment or interest-only payments that are forgivable over time. So what this effectively does is it provides projects with additional equity once that principal is forgiven in the out years. So it improves the financial position of the property during a future refinance or resyndication, and it helps to offset the impacts of that deeper affordability. So those are really powerful resources. The other tool that we use is income averaging, and that's a tool allowed by Virginia Housing for tax credit projects. And it basically tries to help neutralize cash flow impacts of those lower-income units. So in those scenarios, projects are allowed to include some units for moderate-income households, so at like the 70% or 80% AMI affordability level. And again, it kind of helps offset and balance that reduced revenue of the 30% units. And what Virginia Housing requires in those situations is that the overall affordability average of 60% area median income is retained for the entire project. But again, it helps offset those impacts of the 30% units. And then similarly, spreading 30% AMI units across many projects, rather than concentrating them into fewer projects, can help reduce the impact of the units on a single property. So for example, the county currently seeks 10% of units at 30% AMI in all county finance projects when it's financially feasible. Since implementing this policy, the number of 30% units has nearly tripled, so it is working. But our inventory still is nowhere near the need, and more work remains. So with all this in mind, the county's strategy is to use a combination of financing and policy tools to incentivize CAFs affordable at the 30% of AMI level while reducing impact of these units. So the county will continue using housing subsidies to support households in need as well. So it's kind of using both. So continuing to try to bring on those capital upfront subsidies to reduce the rent of the units upfront, but also continuing to use the subsidies from DHS. So to wrap up, this is the last slide. I just wanted to highlight two recent projects that demonstrate our commitment to the steeper affordability. And I think folks in the room are probably familiar with both of these. So first, for Crystal Houses. In 2020, Amazon helped the Washington Housing Conservancy acquire the property and preserve 828 existing rental units. As part of the transaction, Amazon secured the land option on development rights for the vacant parcels at the site, which then in 2021, Amazon assigned that development option to Arlington. And in December 2022, Arlington selected True Ground Housing Partners and EYA Developments to develop the info parcels at Crystal House. And the developer's vision for the site is a mixed-income community that includes both rental and homeownership opportunities. And in working with True Ground and EYA, we anticipate 865 newly built units, and that's in addition to the 828 existing. And that'll include 655 affordable units with the goal of delivering all of the affordable by January 2028. And the first phase to close and begin construction, which is Crystal House 3, also known as The Sweeney, it will include 10% of its units at 30% AMI. And then meanwhile, for Barcroft, Jirel Lynch Real Estate Partners acquired the property in 2021, and they used $150 million loan from Arlington and a $160 million loan from Amazon to help with the acquisition. And following the purchase, the owner began undertaking a long-term planning process that also include deepening affordability. So this process has included significant input from existing residents and includes a mix of renovated units and new development, while also preserving the affordability of the 1,335 rental homes that were already at the property for 99 years. So the affordability package includes 134 units, which is 10%, affordable at 30% AMI. And this really is the largest subset of deeply affordable units in our portfolio. So the acquisition has been recognized both regionally and nationally for efforts that preserved affordability and prevented massive displacement. And similar to Crystal House, it's a multi-phased effort with renovations and new construction, likely delivering in the next three to 10 years. So that concludes my presentation. And again, I really appreciate you having me here tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening, as well as for the work that you do to help bring affordable housing to Arlington families. I want to open up for a discussion amongst the commissioners, clarifying questions, comments. We don't really have an agenda, so we can spend the next 20 or so minutes discussing ways that we can help pursue affordable housing as a commission. Commissioner Striner.
Yeah, so thank you for that presentation. That was really, really interesting, really helpful. I think it gave us all a better understanding of what the affordable housing efforts are going across the county. My question is, you mentioned the 10% goal for 30% AMI, and you mentioned that we're nowhere near that. Could you let us know like where we're at? Not trying to put you on blast, but.
Yeah, I actually, because this housing needs analysis that we just released, the shortage that we anticipate having right now in this moment is about 8,000 units for our families that are earning 30% or less of the area median income. So it's a pretty significant gap. I will say that it's generally about where it was the last time that we ran our housing needs analysis. So there wasn't a huge surprise there. But again, there is this pretty significant shortage. And of all of our households in Arlington, those households that are earning 30% or less of the area median income also are the same households who are measured as being severely cost burdened, which is probably no surprise. So there really is the greatest need with those households.
Got it. Okay. I have one more. So I remember participating in the study last year for homeownership. And so I'm curious if you have any initial findings you can share with the class here before. If not, that's okay. I'm just nosy.
In terms of progress on the homeownership study or?
Any findings? I'm curious. Yeah.
Well, I mean, so in terms of rates of homeownership, or I'm sorry, can you specify your question?
Sorry, sorry. The affordability study that was referenced, that was completed last year. And the slides, I'm curious if you have any findings or if you're saving them for the big reveal here.
Um, yeah, so, and I'm sorry, I want to make sure that I'm understanding your question. Are you talking about the homeownership study or the housing needs analysis that was just?
The housing needs analysis, sorry.
Okay, okay. I'm with you now. Sorry. It is late. It's been a long day. So, okay, so for the housing needs analysis, I would say we, the data didn't change a whole lot from the last go-around. So I would say households in Arlington still tend to be smaller than, and higher in terms of renter versus homeowner than our counterparts around the region. And that is pretty similar to what we saw last go-around as well. And it tracks with what we see in the metro corridor. So again, we have a lot of small renter households in Arlington, again, way more than we see around the region. And that is not really expected to change. Again, specifically with affordability, the biggest cost burdens and so on are with our non-white households, with our renter households, with our households who are earning 30% or less of the area median income. Again, that is all very consistent with the data that we've seen over time. It's actually very consistent with some of the data that we ran through our homeownership study as well, for those of you who followed along with that. So I would say overall, not to minimize the work, because it's always great to have refreshed data, but overall, the data tracked pretty closely to what we saw last go-around. So it means, I think, for us that, you know, we're trying to sort of stem the tide a little bit, but there still is just so much need that we need to try to meet. So, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Now that I understood, I'm so sorry.
No, that's on me. I phrased that weird. Thank you so much. I appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Striner. Commissioner Torres.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a quick question. Might be too specific, but you might know this. For the Barcroft project that you presented, I wanted to know if the 99 years started in 2021, like you mentioned, or does it start when they have actual physical affordable housing?
So yes, I can't answer that. So because the units at the time of purchase, they were already at what we would call the market rate affordable level. In fact, they were actually even below that. The units were renting anywhere from 45% to 50% of the area median income in terms of affordability. So they were actually already below some of our even committed affordable units. And Jirel Lynch agreed for existing residents to keep the rents at that level and cap the amount of annual rent increase that was happening. So we, from day one, we were able to call those committed affordable units. And so that affordability clock of 99 years started on day one. Now, what's happening is as these, you know, the different phases are going forward, either to renovate portions of the property or to create new construction, basically what they're doing is they're adjusting the remaining affordability. Let me say that again. They are basically, with the new covenants that are put on that specific phase, they're calculating how much affordability remains of the 99 years, and that's what's reflected in the covenants for each specific phase. So the affordability will expire at the same time across the whole property. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, sure.
Commissioner Givara.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I'm not sure, you know, if you'd be able to answer this or someone else, but I think one of the things that I'm really. but I think one of the things that I'm really interested in knowing in general is how the county negotiates with developers on affordable housing. I know there's an equation, I know, but I think sometimes the process has seemed a little bit opaque to me as to how those decisions are made. And, you know, there's been plenty of projects that have come before us that, you know, by the SPRC, and they actually, you know, afterwards, even a public hearing, they still haven't fleshed out what the community benefits are. And we I find ourselves sometimes just begging, please, can you consider doing additional unit? Or please, can you? It just seems sort of like a backward process that if we are approving things, then we ought to sort of know those details ahead of time, given, you know, sort of the conversations that we've had, sort of the philosophical view, especially SPRC. And sometimes the projects, by the time they come here, they still don't have that clarity. And so it's a little bit concerning to has been concerning to me, and particularly because I've found the process to be opaque. So just curious, whoever could answer that, thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to take a first crack. And then if any of my planning colleagues would like to jump in and add more color and flavor to it, I I welcome their their contribution there. So under 15.5.8, that is determined by formula. So there really isn't much under 15.5.8 that staff is able to really negotiate per se. You know, because again, that is determined by formula. For 15.5.9, which I suspect might be what you're referencing specifically of the zoning ordinance. So for 15.5.9, basically, the the amount of community benefit is is calculated based on the density that the developer is seeking. And the value and there's a value that is assigned to that density. So for instance, if it's the density is valued at $10 million, let's say, what happens after that is basically the county determines how that benefits package will be divvied up among the various areas where community benefit could be realized, whether it's affordable housing, public art, parks, transportation benefits. And those benefits do need to have, of course, a nexus to the density and the impact that's being created by the project. So for instance, if the project might be creating, I don't know, a lot of transportation type needs because of where it's located, then there may be a higher transportation contribution in that project within that 10 million, then there might be parks, for instance. Affordable housing, typically, there's a pretty, I don't want to say easy case to make, but that one, we have faired actually fairly well under 15.5.9, just because I think there's, again, just an easier that nexus is a little bit easier to make. And so and also if, and now I'm really going to lean on my planning colleagues, but if there also is a sector plan or something else that is in play, there may be, so like the Crystal City Sector Plan may also have guidance in terms of how much affordable housing contribution there might be as part of that benefits package. And now from there, I'm going to phone a friend and see if any of my planning colleagues want to jump in and clarify a little further what I started there. And hopefully not have to correct too much of what I said.
No, and that that was that was perfect. The only thing I'll add to that is just based based on what you said about sector plans. You know, we we do it differently in different parts of the county. And mentioned Crystal City, there was a recommendation in the plan for, you know, of a community benefits benefits package, 20% of the density is onsite. Whereas conversely, in Roslyn, there is a recommendation that we accept cash for AHIF for community benefits for affordable housing. So it it differs based on the adopted policy for that that area. In terms of the calculation, it really is a negotiation between housing and planning staff, and ultimately, the county manager's office on the, as Anne mentioned, there's a specific valuation for the community benefits package. And, you know, a dollar amount is put on, you know, the amount of units and bedrooms and GFA and things of that nature. And so it's all a negotiation. And then, as Anne mentioned, how that factors into the overall community benefits package. Housing is component of it, we're guided by sector plan guidance, but there are other aspects of it, Anne mentioned, transportation improvements, parks improvements, and all those things factor into it, and that proportionality is ultimately determined by the county manager. And so in in terms of your question about information as we come into SPRC, when we are in the SPRC process, most of the time that negotiation is ongoing. And so we don't have any defined answers at that time. And really, the purpose at SPRC is we're asking, you know, what are people prioritizing? Here's what the sector plan guidance says, or any other county policies that are applicable. What are people prioritizing? So by the time we get the planning commission, we have a fully negotiated package that we can explain. So hopefully that answers where you're going with that.
Commissioner Landt, tell me.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Guevara's question. Other jurisdictions in the area, Fairfax, Falls Church, Alexandria, they operate, they have same issues that we do. I've heard, and I don't know how true it is, but I've heard the developers fur those systems because there's more certainty upfront. They know what they can, what what, how much they're going to have to be dealing with. And that ours is fairly opaque, and no developer going in with a new project really knows what how it's going to come out on the other side. I mean, as you mentioned, it is a negotiation. But within that negotiation, is there? Are we losing development to those other jurisdictions because a developer finds a simpler, more predictable path to get to construction?
Commissioner Landt, tell me, I think what what you're referring to are impact fees that I know Fairfax and Prince Williams and some other jurisdictions use. And those are, you know, things that fees that are paid by developers to mitigate the impacts of their development. In Arlington, we do something different, we have incentive zoning. And so it's it's different than what those kind of predictable payments are. And, you know, Anne mentioned again, the difference between 15.58 and 15.59. 15.58 is really meant to be sort of that, so to speak, impact payment, although there are other options, obviously, there's onsite, offsite, or cash payments for that. But that is really intended to be the mechanism that that mitigates the impact of the development. Anything in 15.59 related to community benefits or additional density factors into the incentive zoning structure. And again, the the impetus there is to implement the county's vision for these areas as as in adopted sector plans and and area plans. So it's kind of two different buckets.
Right, but I guess what I'm getting at is inherently, it's less predictable that a developer just can't know going in what's going to happen, whereas those other jurisdictions, because their system, that's more known upfront, and presumably, they can get to through the process faster than here. Or I guess the point is maybe its economic development would know this rather than planning. You know, are we not as competitive when it comes to a developer coming in? I mean, our location is certainly better than theirs. But are we putting up roadblocks that we could deal with better? That we would get more development here, the more development, the more housing we would get, you know, it's and we want housing. So, you know, there's a there's a balance here.
Sure.
I have a question for our guest from Affordable Housing. I saw a presentation last year from the Arlington Community Foundation about a pilot that they did, where when there was a new project coming online to provide market rate housing for the units at 60% AMI that were being provided, they bought down the units from 60% to 30% AMI so that they kind of gave the developer money upfront to say, okay, for the life of this project, for the affordable housing that's being provided, instead of being 60%, you know, provided at 30%. Is that something that you guys have looked at, considered? Could we theoretically use AHIF money to buy down units that are coming online from the 60% to the 30%?
Yeah, so, yeah, the Arlington Community Foundation pilot that they used, it effectively works similar to that Federal Home Loan Bank and Virginia Housing Trust Fund money that I mentioned a few minutes ago, where basically, where those two sources were forgivable over time. The community foundation money, I think, was just like a grant upfront. I don't remember exactly how it was structured, but but effectively, it becomes instant equity in the project. So it really does, it reduces the amount of debt that they need to borrow. And so it basically helps reduce the impact of those lower affordable, those more deeply affordable units. So the way that AHIF works, we we usually provide one single loan. We do have some some examples where if we're using like federal money and local money in some combination, where maybe we'll do multiple different loans and have different terms associated with those. But typically, what we do is we have a single AHIF loan. And the way that those loans are structured, they are subordinate to any first trust or other financing that they have on the project. And it's our financing is repayable as the project is able to afford it. And we do that intentionally because if we have a hard pay, you know, loan, for instance, it impacts their ability to borrow all those other sources because they have to have to make a payment to us along with paying everybody else. And so it directly reduces their ability to borrow from, you know, Virginia Housing or any of these other places, Capital One. And so while ours is not a grant, and there's a lot of reasons we we don't structure it as a as a grant, again, it's repayable only as the project has funds to pay us back. Which so typically, in effect, what happens is whenever there's a refinance in the future or some kind of recapitalization, so they go for more tax credits or something like that, that is typically when we get a big chunk of our of our loan repaid. And again, that allows us to put money into other projects as well. So that was a very long answer to your question. But I think basically, our our funds are structured as loans, but they're not structured as like a hard pay loan where it penalizes the project if they go deeper in the affordability, if that makes sense.
So could the planning commission recommend that the county board use AHIF funds to bring proposed 60% AMI units in a in a site plan be brought down to 30% AMI?
So basically, like under, like, for instance, a moment ago, when we were talking about units under 15.5.8, the affordable housing ordinance that are, you know, if the developer is opting to make those onsite units, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, if the developer says we'll provide eight units at 60% AMI, could we say, thanks, county board, please get those down to 30% AMI by using AHIF funds or other tax revenues?
We we certainly could have that discussion. I would, what I would not be sure about in that case is if that would upset the rest of their financial stack. The the units, for some of the reasons that I shared a few minutes ago, they in operations do struggle to cover their own operating expenses and so on. The upfront AHIF subsidy tries to kind of offset that a little bit. But again, even over time, sometimes those operating costs do exceed the revenue that these units can kick out. Yeah, and the reason that matters is just because if it is really a market rate project and they just have a small subset of affordable, sometimes the investors and lenders and those projects just have a lower tolerance for that kind of risk. So it's something that that we could we could talk about for sure, and we could explore that and maybe test it with some of our existing site plan developers, just to kind of ask the question, like, is this something that they would entertain? So I just don't know, again, given the risk profile for their lenders and equity investors, if they would, if they would entertain it.
Yeah, I mean.
But we can certainly look into it.
Yeah, if you're willing to have the conversation with a couple of developers, I think we'd really be interested in hearing what the feedback is. I'm also just wondering, as far as the tools that we have as a commission for what you presented, is the income averaging something that we could also say to developers that come to us and say, we're willing to provide eight onsite units? Could we, as a commission, theoretically say, okay, please apply income averaging so that we get some units at the the range? And maybe that's Mr. Pfeiffer.
Sorry, Sheriff Peterson, could you could you repeat the specific question?
So it was said earlier that one of the tools that we use to get the deeply affordable units is income averaging, so providing some units at the 30% AMI, but then some units maybe at 90% AMI. So could the planning commission theoretically recommend to the county board that a future project have income averaging so that we could get a wider range?
You could definitely do that for the community benefits.
Okay.
Package for the through 15.58, there is a provision that talks about specifically commitment to a 30-year term affordable at 60% AMI.
Okay.
But for the community benefits package, I believe you could do that. I don't, you know, our standard conditions, I think, reference 60%, but I think that, you know, there there is a mechanism for that to happen.
Okay, good for us to know. Other questions, we're at 8:40. I did promise us we'd get out early, but I think this is a really important conversation that we have been talking about for years, so happy to keep us going for a few more minutes. Commissioner Patel.
I just want to ask that follow up to what you just said about the site condition. I'm all about policy tonight, have you noticed? Is there, other than what Anne has been talking to us about tonight, about all the considerations, is there a reason why we wouldn't be able to amend that particular provision?
I think right now, and I'll I'll let Anne elaborate on this or correct any misstatements I made, I make. I think right now that site plan condition is reflective of our current affordable housing master plan policy, which prioritizes committed affordable units onsite at 60% AMI. So I think, you know, were we to make a change to that site plan condition, it would have to be reflective of a change in that policy.
Okay.
And and I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Well, another thing that I will share is, I will say, so like, for instance, under 15.5.9, when we put together a recommended package for the affordable housing component of that community benefits, the larger package, we are typically given a value that, you know, is sort of our upper limit of what we're able to bring back. So if of, I I shared earlier, hypothetical example, if the total community benefits package, it has a value of 10 million, and let's say the housing portion of that is 4 million. And our experience, with the exception to this, of course, the developer is fairly flexible in terms of how, like, what we include in that 4 million in terms of value and the in terms of unit mix, affordability levels, all of the different things. However, as we add more bedrooms, as we go deeper in affordability, typically, 50% AMI is the deepest we go. But as we play with that, the cost of that unit goes up. And that's some of, I think, what I shared a little bit earlier, too. And so we might go from, you know, a package that includes 10 units to now we can only get five units. And sometimes we're willing to make that trade off based on the location, or wow, we really need three-bedroom units, and this property is going to offer three-bedroom units, this is our chance to get some, so let's go for the three bedrooms. And we recognize we're only going to get five of them, and that's okay, you know. But I just want to, I guess, raise that, you know, for consideration of this group that, you know, staff is sort of playing with the affordability and unit mixes within the limit, you know, the constraints that were given. And, you know, so it is a consideration that, you know, that we look at. And so if at some future point, if the commission, for instance, were to recommend a different affordability or unit mix to what staff is recommending, that is something that we could, you know, of course, talk about at that time. And just to keep in mind, it may have the effect of reducing the total number of units that we can get at the property because the cost, the incremental cost of those units will go up if we go deeper in affordability or increase the number of bedrooms of the units, if that makes sense.
It does, and and I think Matt didn't want you to say all that because the problem for this commission is that we regularly want everybody to go under the 60%. And I think the the basis for that position is ACF's, you know, studies on where we are in terms of supply at 60% versus where we are on supply under 60% and particularly at the deeply affordable affordable rate. And so this was a question I hadn't anticipated asking, but if we, and I recognize that sometimes when we're pulling on one lever, another one, you know, juts out in a way that we're going to have to then. going to have to then account for as well. But if there were, if there were, if there was this like requirement that when you're doing new development in Arlington, that you are going to provide this mix of levels of committed affordable housing, committed affordable units, and that was just the requirement across the board, then would that not result in some movement on the lender's side, on the, on the underwriter's side, saying, well, you know, if there's going to be this development that's happening in this locality, this is what the standard culture is?
Um, I think from a policy perspective, I think folks would understand upfront, certainly, that that's what they need to anticipate. Unfortunately, even if by policy we're requiring it, it won't necessarily help the numbers on the backend, and that's really what they're going to care about. So if we required, I'll be extreme for a moment, all 30% AMI units for any of the onsites that we require or that's negotiated, you know, I could see a scenario potentially where developers or even their lenders or equity investors would say, that's too risky, we're going to go to Fairfax. You know, so we respect your policy, we understand the policy, we know that if we're going to come in, that's the expectation, but it's too risky and it doesn't change the numbers. Even though it's a laudable goal, the Housing Director would love to see more 30% AMI units, you know, it, the deal may not pencil. And so that, and again, just the risk profile for these projects is very different than the, you know, than the 100% affordable tax credit projects that, you know, that our division often works with. So again, it's just a matter of trade-offs, and I think trying to find that balance so that we can achieve as many policy goals as, as we can, while also making sure that we don't scare off the, the developers that we need and want to do business in Arlington.
Great. I'm going to call you with my third question because it's 8:46, and Tenley promised that we were leaving at about four or nine o'clock. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Well, and thank you so much for having me. I'm happy to come back.
Anne, Anne, you don't get to leave yet.
Oh.
We, we have some more questions.
I've been waiting very patiently to speak with you.
Well, I don't know.
Let's, let's keep our questions and our answers concise, if possible.
You know, other folks get the last long-winded questions, I'll ask a moderately winded one. So, um, okay, I really appreciate the, you bringing up the examples of Crystal Houses and Barcroft. Both were actually supported by Amazon, right? Crystal Houses was the, the land. Barcroft was the unique, you know, mixing and matching of loan guarantees for the property acquisition. I guess where I'm getting at this is, making a statement, I'm leading into a question, don't worry. These, these projects are difficult because we're talking about financing. What we haven't really talked about is how do you get your hands if you want, if you're an affordable housing developer, how do you get your hands on property at all to do a project? So a lot of the ones we've seen recently are either these unique opportunities or we've got Lucky, is it Lucky Gardens? That's coming up. Marbella was an infill project. We've seen a lot of infill projects recently as well. I guess where I'm getting at is the, the true cost of the project also has to account for the land. Like, you gotta have the land to do this. I know it's like an obvious point to make, but you have to have the land to do it. So my question is, from a policy standpoint, you know, I know that folks in the General Assembly have talked about faith and housing, that sort of thing on the state level. But is that something that staff has, has kind of talked about or tinkered with, thinking about our faith communities? And I'm bringing this up because we have seen projects like on Columbia Pike, right? True Ground had a development. And we certainly have a lot of faith organizations, churches that have properties that they may want to develop. Have, has staff kind of at least considered that on an informal basis, like, you know, expedited permitting reviews, waiving of certain fees, like other flexibilities that could be considered to maybe make some of these affordable projects a little bit more feasible?
Yeah. So under our institutional partnerships is sort of the, the broad umbrella of that body of work under Housing Arlington. You're right, we've had some really fantastic projects come through under that. We've had, you know, Gillian Place, the Macedonian, we have, most recently, Unity Homes into Williger Place. So we've had a number of examples where nonprofit land has been used in order to, you know, create affordable housing units, basically. And we end up with a mixed-use, you know, property in, in the end there. Where we find ourselves now is that the, the faith communities in particular, who have shown interest have come forward, their properties are less conveniently located, I'll just say. They're a little more, they're starting to nestle a little more in the neighborhoods and the residential areas, a little further off the, the transit corridors. It makes, the tools are more limited there with what we have right now. And so, but stay tuned. We are, yes, we are looking into it. And again, working very closely with our planning and zoning colleagues. And there definitely is interest, I would say, from our leadership to really try to, again, see what tools we can come up with and, you know, so that we can make that kind of development a little easier for the property owners who have that interest. Because someone earlier used the phrase missed opportunity. And one of the things that keeps me up at night for real is that we have these faith organizations who, they have so much land, they have probably the biggest land holdings left in Arlington, and they are coming to us saying, help us help you. And we have no planning zoning tools to help them develop the way that they'd like to develop. And so it is something that we are actively looking into. And I don't have anything further to share at this time, but just that it is of great interest. So stay tuned.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Anne.
Well, thank you very much for that fantastic presentation on this very important topic. I think every member of this Planning Commission understands and appreciates the importance of affordable housing in our community. We are doing this to make our community stronger. We're doing this to make sure that we have a wonderful group of people who live in this community and who can stay in this community if they were, that were raised here, they can continue to live here. The Affordable Housing Program makes sure that we are a diverse community, that we are able to learn from each other, and that we're not seeing gentrification and displacement. So thank you very much for the work that you do. We appreciate that. And we look forward to hearing about additional tools or ideas you have about how our commission can help work on the goals of the Affordable Housing Master Plan. So thank you. I would like to now move us to our PC Business and Organizational Matters. We will go through this quickly. First, I want to introduce our two new Planning Commissioners. Anybody watching from home may have seen on our voting, we have two new members among us, Paula Amadeo and Adriana Torres. Welcome to the Planning Commission. They both have been appointed to a four-year term. So we are very excited to have you here with us. Thank you. I think if, if it's possible, we'll hold the approval of the meeting minutes to next month. So then that gets us to our staff updates from Mr. Pfeiffer.
We have no particular updates this month.
Wonderful. Do we have any LRPC rosters or a report from Commissioner Steinberger?
Yeah, I can do a report. We had an Ahmed meeting on a possible flop situation last week. So typically, there's only one Ahmed meeting, so next step would sort of, to be continued. There'll be, I think, a virtual engagement for that. We have an upcoming LRPC meeting on 10/29, so that's two days before Halloween, on the Low Residential Study. And then looking to next month, on November 12th, the comp plan update that I believe is meeting two on that project with the LRPC. Potentially, there's three meetings on that, maybe just two, to be determined, at least two, because we have one on the 12th. There you go. And I'm not sure of a roster to be.
We have one roster for the, we have actually two total rosters, but one LRPC roster for the Low Residential Study.
Okay. So colleagues, I ask for unanimous consent to approve this roster. So moved. It is approved. Okay. Do we have a SPRC report or roster from Commissioner Bagley?
Just a quick shout out to Commissioners Berkey, Huivara, and Steinberger for chairing some of the upcoming SPRCs. You'll have a report from me soon. And also, we are phasing in our new commissioners on a shadowing, quote unquote, mentoring basis. So thank you to those chairs who are willing to do that. And I will get back to, we've already squared away Commissioner Amurio, and I will get back to Commissioner Torres shortly about that. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, Mr. Pfeiffer, do we have a roster at the moment?
Yeah. It's pulled up on screen.
Yeah, Lucky Gardens.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, I ask for unanimous consent to approve the SPRC roster on your screen.
I would only like to note that Commissioner Amadeo is co-chairing, but I, I don't think we need to amend the roster at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So unanimous consent on this roster? Sounds good. It is approved. Okay. Commissioner Striner?
I was just going to say, so Peter's co-chairing with me as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Commissioner Striner, Zoko, report?
Nothing from Zoko. I do have a transportation update.
Yes, please.
Okay. So we met last month, and we saw some preliminary maps that were coming out. I've shared them with all of you and asked for some comments. Common period's closed now. I'm just going to send, send my comments off. But basically, we tiered the, we have a whole map that tiers basically pedestrians first in all cases, and then depending on the corridor, it's going to be a transit preferred or bike preferred. That's kind of going to be the, the sort of modus operandi for how the county is going to look at transportation over the next 20 years, with cars sort of falling behind those. Obviously, they'll still be factored into the equation, but they're not going to be the sort of priority. Because the feedback that we receive throughout our various public engagements and through our meetings is that pedestrian seems to be the universal first-place winner for public support in all of our corridors across the county. So we'll have another meeting coming up, I believe, in the last week of the month. And so I'll be circling back with all of you with updates and highlights from that meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Berkey, Form-Based Code, Aug.
Ooh. We do have a meeting coming up. I don't have a report in front of me, but while I have the mic, I will, I'll just add the report as far as the Affordable Housing Ordinance Working Group through the Housing Commission. So we did, there was a vote on recommendations, you may have seen it. It ultimately went to the Housing Commission. So I represented us, and I apologize for not being as timely on my updates, but essentially, that working group recommended, the Housing Commission recommend that the County Board basically take two actions. A, consider legislative recommendation that the county basically get authority to change the ordinance and have more autonomy over the affordable housing contributions moving forward. So that's something that the County Board can consider. And then the second is a recommendation of a reconvee, of a convening of a second working group to, to actually nail down some of the details of the contributions. There were several meetings of the working group, and essentially, the tension was what you'd expected to be, which was trying to figure out what trade-offs you can make when there was a lot of support for more contributions from developers and market rate developments for affordable housing, and figuring out how to possibly achieve that and produce more contributions to the Affordable Housing Investment Fund, or AHIF, while at the same time ensuring that we don't do things to prevent housing production or overburden, you know, development costs. So kind of what the trade-offs were. And one of the other themes of those meetings was essentially, you know, some folks who are representing the development community expressed a strong preference for certainty throughout a process. So, you know, you could see a recommendation down the road where, you know, maybe certain concessions on contributions are found in exchange for other certainties provided to developers. And we've sort of gone down that road a little bit already with the Adaptive Reuse Amendments, right? Which essentially provides some certainty more upfront for developers in exchange for, you know, obviously, providing more housing. So maybe you see a scenario like that, or maybe you don't. Maybe we, we don't come to an agreement if there's another working group. So anyway, I can answer more questions offline. We do have a, a Affordable Housing Working Group meeting coming up, and I believe we've got more Form-Based Code requests regarding Barcroft. So nothing to report at this time.
Okay. And finally, Commissioner Bagley on PFRC.
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I did want to give a quick plug before we close on the Comprehensive Plan introductory chapter update. Currently, there is an online feedback form that is open until September, I'm sorry, Sunday, November 16th. It is really important that as many people participate in this process as possible so we can make sure that the introductory chapter, which will tie in all future and guide all future updates to comprehensive plan elements, all of us provide feedback to that, as well as members of the community listening tonight. There will also be three community meetings happening on October 14th, October 23rd, October 28th, oh, and look, there's another one, November 5th. So please attend any one of those community meetings to help guide the introductory chapter of the Comprehensive Plan update. Thank you tonight to staff, applicants, and public speakers. Tonight's hearing summary will be presented to the County Board at their upcoming hearing by Commissioner Guivara. This meeting is in recess, adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.